Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. So we'll move into the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. And council members, I can't see if you're ringing in via our electronic system, so if I can get a... Just help me recognize you by raising your hand if you'd like to make the motion. Councillor Gustafson, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Now move the minutes of the City Council Meeting held August 7th, 2012 be adopted.
Thanks very much. Councillor Gustafson, did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Councillor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Could you look at 13.3?
Do you want to highlight what you noted?
It says, "Mayor Given reported that Grand Prairie, a meeting on health services discussions." So I'm not sure what... Somebody can remember what that was about.
Thanks very much, Councillor Radburn.
Oh, Grand Prairie hosted a meeting, but you talked about more than just healthcare, didn't you?
Sorry, I'm just trying to spot it in the notes there.
Page four.
Oh, and yeah, thanks. And the majority of the discussion focused on health services. Thanks very much, Councillor Radburn. So that was, yeah, just a little bit of context. Yeah. The majority of that Northern Alberta elected leaders' meeting was focused around health issues. Thanks very much, Councillor Radburn. Okay, so with that note, anyone note any other errors or omissions? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor? And that motion's carried. None opposed? Would look for an adoption of the agenda. Councillor Crokin.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move the council adopt the agenda as presented with two additions, 8.1.1 Council Reenumeration Committee and 8.1.2 Appointments to Committees.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councillor Crokin. So a motion for the adoption of the agenda with those two additional agenda items. Any discussion or debate on the adoption of the agenda? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor? And that motion carries unanimously. Thanks very much. This brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda, an opportunity for anybody in the community that would like to come forward and address council on any community-related matter to do so. We see a few folks out in the crowd, and if you'd like to come forward and speak to council, this is your opportunity to do that. Unless, of course, it's the matter of a public hearing, which we'll discuss just slightly further on in our agenda. And it looks like we don't have anybody that's going to come forward to address council tonight, so we'll close the delegation portion of our agenda and move on to public hearings. And we have one public hearing tonight, or excuse me, one item under public hearings, item 6.1, Northwest Area Structure Plan Transportation Concept Amendments. And pass it over to Administration and Mr. Johnson. Joe?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. On May 28th, Administration presented these bylaws to council. The recommendation was approval of the amendments to the Hidden Valley and Northwest area structure plans and rescinding of first reading to... for the bylaw regarding the Gateway Area Structure Plan. After hearing concerns presented by a representative of a number of landowners and developers in the area, council opted to postpone the public hearing for a period of three months. In the period of the postponement, Administration has not been able to rectify the issues that have been identified in the subject area. We have had some discussions with the consultant that presented at that public hearing. Following this public hearing, Administration will be reporting to the Public Works Committee to request direction to amend the capital plan to identify funding and initiate a transportation planning exercise for this area. That exercise could take anywhere in the area of six to 12 months. Once an alternative transportation network is created, Administration will bring forward additional bylaws to these area structure plans to insert that new transportation network into the documents. In the meantime, Administration feels that it is appropriate to adopt the aforementioned bylaws as an interim measure. I'm open to any questions.
Thanks very much, Mr. Johnson. Councillor Rice?
Why would we not just leave all three of the bylaws? Why would we pass two? What... Like, I don't... I never... I couldn't understand the advantage of passing those two instead of just delaying everything for a further six months or something.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. The one gateway one was a little bit different because it has an element of finality to it, if that's a word. It would be... It would create an opportunity where we would dispose... we could dispose of that road. So the amendments were always pitched as an interim measure, whereas that gateway kind of fell short of that intention. In terms of adopting these bylaws or postponing it until a new network is arrived upon, we've kind of been in that situation for about the last six years, and the solution just keeps... We haven't been able to arrive at a solution, and we felt that it was inappropriate to have planning documents out there that didn't represent reality, and the reality was that the transportation network in that area is no longer feasible. It's not in the city's long-term interests, and we felt that the planning documents ought to reflect the truth, and the truth is that that system is a failure and should not be built. So that's the reasoning for adopting these as an interim.
Councillor Rice?
But if we pass two bylaws, doesn't that take away some of our choices to identify solutions? I guess that's one question. The second one is, I note in bylaw C-1028-C, it references 132nd Avenue and the way that would interface with the whole plan. There has, as I think we're all aware, there's been some concern expressed on the final look of 132nd Avenue. So I guess it makes me concerned to proceed with that when we don't have a clear idea in our mind where... what we're going to end up with on 132nd.
Okay. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. So to answer those questions in order, the first concern that you had stated was about options. To adopt... to take Administration's recommendation, which is to rescind first reading on the Gateway, adopt Hidden Valley and Northwest, I believe actually maintains the most options. Rescinding Gateway saves an opportunity for that 107th road right-of-way, be it for a future collector, or maybe a local, or maybe a lane, who knows? But it's an option just to keep there, just in case. The amendments to Hidden Valley and Northwest in no way remove options. It just creates a blank slate, if you will, for that area. In terms of transportation, only land uses and everything stay the same. With respect to C-1028-C and the mention of 132nd Avenue, I think what's probably happening there is that the bylaws are far more wordy than the actual substance of the amendment in that we'll say, delete this entire section in its entirety, and then we'll replace it with almost the same thing, except rewording a few sections. So the mention of 132nd Avenue is likely what's currently in the existing document. It's just removed and put back in exactly the same, just for ease of amending the plans. It's complicated. No changes happened to anything on 132nd Avenue as a result of this amendment.
But that's my point. There are people who are not happy with 132nd. I guess I'm reluctant to enshrine a plan for 132nd.
So at this point, this is an opportunity for questions from Administration, and I think we need to folk... We also haven't done the part which you have to in a public hearing of asking for presentation submissions. We may not have a lot of them tonight, but it's a requirement of a public hearing, so we need to get to that. But I think we also need to folk... Keep in mind the area that these bylaws address. They're in the Northwest area, and the design around 132nd is probably more around the 100th Street. Councillor Rice, if I'm remembering correctly where your concern comes from, I don't think that those engineering studies would be impacted at all by any of the decisions that we'd make on this area. So I'm going to move on. If there's other quest... We'll have an opportunity for questions from Administration. I'm going to call if there are anyone who would like to speak in favor of the... Anyone from the public who would like to make a presentation or submission in favor of the proposed bylaw amendments. I'd call again to see if there's anybody that would like to come forward in favor of the proposed bylaw amendments. Okay? And then I would look for the other side. I would call if anyone forward who would like to speak in opposition to the proposed amendments. And I'd call again to see if there's anybody that would like to speak in opposition to the proposed amendments. Okay? And I see that there is nobody coming forward on either, so we'll have another opportunity for questions for Administration. And I saw Councillor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. So Joe, the... What were the results of the discussions with Ian Ketchum to discuss possible solutions? Why didn't anything happen?
Mr. Johnson?
I was hoping something would happen so we could move forward. Not that simple, is that the answer?
It is not that simple. We did have some discussions. They have some preliminary concepts that we were prepared to receive and review. And that's kind of the position that we were in for the last year or so, is we thought, well, BLK is representing the majority of the landowners in this area, and they've been telling us that they're going to have something for us to review. So rather than, you know, initiating a city-funded study, if they can come forward with a network and we can work together to review it and insert that into the documents, then that's a reasonable course of action. They were unable to get permission from all of the landowners in the area to release that concept. So we continued on this... We weren't able to move forward with anything, so ultimately Administration decided that we need to lead the way, I guess, and amend... Part of the discussion here, we're amending the capital plan to start that exercise is probably the most appropriate way to move it along. Since that time of writing the report, I've actually spoken with Ian, and he was able to get permission to release that concept, and we have that. But that was on like Friday afternoon sort of thing. So perhaps the way we start the planning exercise would be to take that concept and give it to some other consultants, say, tell us what you think. Is this something that's going to work for us, or at least it's a starting point?
Right.
So that's...
Councillor Radburn?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Given. The... So we're not sure with the direction to initiate a transportation planning exercise will happen or not now. If it does happen, if that does come to committee, the subject area that is referred there, is that just the Gateway area? Plan, structure plan? Or would that transportation planning exercise contemplate all three areas?
Yeah, so to answer the first question, I believe that something's going to happen in terms of an exercise. It's just exactly what... So if, like I said, we may just take the concept and give it to a consultant and say, review it, and that's still going to be an exercise on its own. It may be that, or it may be blank slate, tell us what we need to do here to solve all the issues. The second question... Oh, the subject area. The subject area includes a little bit of land from the northern part of Gateway, the Hidden Valley Area Structure Plan that's west of Bear Creek, and then the Northwest Area Structure Plan east of 116th. I do have a graphic if you'd like me to pull it up.
I don't know if we can... Can we pull up graphics?
Okay. Just scroll down maybe. Yep, right there. That's perfect. So that's the subject area, lined in yellow, and it does cover portions of three area structure plans.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Given. Okay. I saw Councillor Wong and then Councillor McLean.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Mr. Johnson, I think I know the answer to this because you've been in discussions with Barstow's leaners in Ketchum, but were they invited to come to the public hearing here tonight?
I gave Ian a courtesy call about a week ago to remind him of it. We had a brief discussion. He said that he planned on attending, so he may have changed his mind, or... But yes, he was aware of it.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Thanks, Councillor Wong. Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Mr. Johnson, a couple of questions I have on 107th Ave. We already know the traffic is very high volume there. So with this, I'm glad that the 300 acres in the three area structure plans, which Gateway is a small area that you're worried about, just this one road going around the matter, that will disappear, and you'd be looking at the rest of the area north. Am I assuming that correct?
Mr. Johnson?
That's a very possible solution. All of the draft concepts that we have up until this point do see the closure of the extension of 107th Avenue. So... And yes, the main purpose is to divert traffic away from the 107th Avenue intersection. Just as an option, we'd like to leave that road right-of-way open in case there is some utility of having it, but in all likelihood, we anticipate that it would be... It would not be utilized in a new concept.
The reason why I ask, Mr. Johnson, is because when it was presented to us in May, the group that came forward, we had some concerns, they're not here tonight, and the city is saying... And as well as someone that lives in the city for 20 years, the area is already well-used. Can't we just close it off tonight? Then you have 300 acres above, it's just this one road. It'd be done tonight. You won't have this. Like, I don't know what kind of road you're looking at there. A new structure plan would be above north of it. This would be done then. Am I correct? If we can... Because you were looking for that information in May, then we had a group saying, hold on a minute, and now the group's not even here tonight. So why don't we just go back to what you wanted in May for this one little piece, and then the rest of it?
I believe the recommendation that's in front of us tonight is the same recommendation from Administration that was in front of us back in May. So Administration hasn't changed their tune.
No, okay.
It's the same recommendation that came forward before, which was to basically say, the plans right now show that we don't need this road space in that part by the manner, and so no big deal, the city could sell it. What Administration is telling us with the recommendation here, I believe, is that we may potentially possibly need this, so let's hold on.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Given. I got that with a service road, but there could be something else used with this land beside the service road. That's where I was going to... Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Administration? If there aren't, then I will close the public hearing and we'll move on to business arising from the public hearing. There are some recommendations from Administration. They're a little bit further on in our council minutes, or our agenda package, excuse me. We have a recommendation there, and if somebody would care to make a motion in one way or another, to deal with the business arising from this public hearing. See council members rapidly scrolling through their packages. Councillor Radburn?
Okay, so you can... If I'm heading off on the wrong path, you'll let me know.
But I think that unfortunately the motions aren't in here for us tonight, but I think that the first one would be that City Council give bylaws... Can we do one at a time? Do we do one at a time? Bylaws C-1028-C, second reading.
Excellent. That's... You are on exactly the right path. Thanks very much, Councillor Radburn. So we have a motion for second reading of bylaw C-1028-C. Open for discussion or debate on the motion? Councillor Radburn, do you want to speak?
Yeah, so I think this... All these originally were to kind of clean the slate, so to speak, in each of those areas, transportation networks in each of those three areas, and kind of be available to start afresh. So I don't have a problem with this motion for this particular structure plan.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councillor Radburn. Any other discussion or debate on second reading? Councillor Wong?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I do support these bylaws as they're going to be presented. The original intent of postponing was to see if the consultants had alternatives for structures of the roadway, and it turns out that with their communication with our Administration, they haven't... We haven't been able to come to any kind of agreement in terms of what would be the best road plan. So hiring a consultant to do that as a whole seems to make a lot of sense, and that way we don't have to parcel out roads here and there. We can look at it as a larger transportation network.
Thanks, Councillor Wong. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote on second reading. All in favor?
Oh.
Motion carries unanimously. Councillor Radburn?
Thank you. I'd move council... Council give bylaw C-1028-C, third reading.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councillor Radburn. A motion for third reading. Any discussion or debate on third reading of bylaw C-1028-C? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor? That motion carries unanimously. So that's the first of our three bylaws that needed dealt with. Anybody... Could we have a motion on the second package? Councillor Wong?
Sure, Mayor Given. I move second reading of bylaw C-1106-03, the amendment to the Northwest Area Structure Plan.
Thanks very much, Councillor Wong. Any discussion or debate on second reading of bylaw C-1106-03? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Carried unanimously. Councillor Wong?
I move third reading of bylaw C-1106-03, the amendment of the Northwest Area Structure Plan.
Thanks very much, Councillor Wong. Open for discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Thanks, Councillor Wong. And we had one final bylaw. Councillor O'Toole? You'll have to get your microphone, Councillor O'Toole.
I'd like to recommend City Council give the bylaw C-1216-A, second reading.
I think on this one, though, we're actually... Administration's actually recommending to rescind first reading. So if that was your intent... I know we've got a package back from back in May.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
There's a difference there, so...
Yeah. Rescind first reading.
Okay. Okay, thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. So a motion to rescind first reading of bylaw C-1216-A. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Councillor Radburn?
Thank you. I will not be...
Your microphone, Councillor Radburn.
I'll not be supporting this motion. I believe that all three should be treated similarly. Yes, there is an opportunity there to use some of that roadway land for a... It is a potential site for a seniors lodge facility. So I would like to treat this parcel the same, and we start from scratch rather than projecting that in any way. It's certainly that way we can continue to look at it as a potential site, which would speed things up at the end of the line. And there would not be any action taken, to my knowledge, on this until after this report was brought, or this transportation planning exercise. It's not like we're going to usurp or interfere with that process with moving forward. I just... I think it should be treated similarly, so we're starting from scratch, and we'll see what the transportation plan says, and we can... Transportation planning exercise says, and we can continue moving forward to looking at as a possible use for... Of city land for a city purpose.
Okay. Thanks, Councillor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on... Any other discussion or debate on the motion? Councillor Wong?
I guess I'd be curious from Administration to just give us a timeframe of when the next senior facility would be contemplated for planning.
Sorry, this is a discussion or debate, so not really an opportunity for questions with Administration. But Councillor Radburn, from maybe grand spirit perspective?
Three to five years.
I'm sorry, Councillor Radburn, you didn't have your microphone on, but three to five years was the answer, I think?
In that case, I would side with Councillor Radburn there. I don't think we're going to be interfering with too many immediate plans by keeping this parcel kind of reserved as land as opposed to reserved for roadway. So I will vote to... In opposition of the motion.
Okay. Thanks, Councillor Wong. Councillor McLean, and then Councillor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Question for Mr. Johnson. If it passes as is for yes right now, then councils can go forward on... It takes it out of the structure plan, and it's a small area, and it's already been proposed that it's not used for a road. So I don't know where...
Sorry, Councillor McLean, I just waved off Councillor Wong on a question, and so...
Oh, sorry.
So again, discussion debate on the motion that Councillor O'Toole made to rescind first reading of the bylaw. So any discussion or debate there? No? Councillor Radburn, I did see your hand.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I guess the other rationale for my choosing to oppose this motion would be that maybe leaving it open would create some impetus from all parties to move forward with whatever transportation planning exercise is contemplated sooner rather than later. I don't want it to wait 12 months. We need to... We need to know if that site is available sooner rather than later.
Any further discussion or debate? So we have Councillor O'Toole's motion to rescind first reading of bylaw C-1216-A. I see no further discussion or debate, so I'll call the question. All in favor of rescinding first reading? And there are one, two, three, four, five in favor and opposed. Four opposed, so that motion carries. So we've rescinded first reading, and I believe that deals with all items of business from that public hearing. And we would move on to unfinished business, which we had none. And we move into reports where we see our additional items. Item 8.11 and 8.12, Councillor Crokin.
Thanks, Mayor Given. 8.11, I move terms of reference of the Council Reenumeration Review Committee be revised to increase the public members appointed from three to four people.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councillor Crokin. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor? And that motion carries unanimously. Councillor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I also move council approve four appointments to the Council Reenumeration Review Committee, each for a term ending December 31st, 2012. Members being Ms. Madeline Humbert, Ms. Kimberly McDougall, Ms. Tricia McCloskey, and Mr. Warren Travassil.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councillor Crokin. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. And we move on into committee business. 9.1, Public Works Committee. Councillor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move the council receive the minutes of Public Works Committee meeting held August 7th, 2012.
Thanks very much, Councillor Gustafson. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Councillor Radburn?
Just throw the second two in the motion under 4.2.
Sorry, Councillor Radburn, your microphone, just for... Thank you.
Can we just delete the second two in the motion under 4.2? Move by Councillor Rice to refer the request to investigate.
Okay. You have an extra, an extraneous two?
Right.
And you mean the word two, not the number two?
The word two.
Thank you. Okay. If there was nothing else on that set of minutes, then I'll call for the vote on Councillor Gustafson's motion to accept them. All in favor? Carried unanimously. Councillor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move the council send the town of Wembley a letter of support for regional waterline.
Thanks very much, Councillor Gustafson. Open for discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none? Seeing none, I'll call for the, Counselor McLean? Discussion? Your microphone?
Discussion, I look forward to, I always did for like town of Sexsmith and town of Wembley to have fresh drinking water, as long as the city remains hopefully around eight percent of Aquaterra. Anyways, I'm looking forward to a town having fresh drinking water, just towns.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Counselor Gustafson, was there anything else you wanted to highlight in this set of public works minutes?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. We had a brief topic about Hundred Tenth Avenue mid-block crossing right by Avondale and Harry Balfour School. We've decided to eliminate that crossing, and we're going to work with, and educate Avondale and Harry Balfour about the safety of how important it is to walk to the corner to cross the street. And we had the town of Wembley request a regional water line, which we just did, and our very own Helen Rice requested that we investigate some noise, noise snaring technology that's been implicated, been being used in Calgary right now, so it might be quieter around here. Thank you.
You didn't mean quieter in council chambers, did you? Unlikely. Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. And that takes us to nine point two in Community Development Committee. Counselor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I move council receive the minutes of the Community Development Committee meeting held August the seventh, 2012.
Thanks very much, Counselor Crokin. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Counselor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I also move council direct administration to issue a request for proposal to conduct an economic assessment regarding expansion to the Crystal Center and allocating funding of up to $200,000 from the future capital expenditure reserve.
Thanks very much, Counselor Crokin. Open for discussion or debate on Counselor Crokin's motion? Counselor Crokin, you wanted to speak to the motion? And then Counselor Gustafson? Sure.
Thanks, Mayor Given. We had, we do have a ten-year-old report on what we were going to do, or what we've expected the current location to either provide or produce. So it's about a ten-year-old, not only, it is a ten-year-old document. And market has changed, region has changed, we want to look at anything that's current and going forward, not what's happening today and going backwards. So I think it's a, it's a positive move, and Jane Katta has told us that we'll have a good review of the assessment.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Crokin. Counselor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would, I would like to, I'd like to move that we table this till budget deliberations. Being so close to budget deliberations, it's a big ticket item. There's a lot that comes on the table when we go to budget deliberations, and as far as future expansion of any parts of the city, we, you know, we could, we could argue that we need lots of things from, from school, roadways, the expansion opportunities around the college, leisure center annexations coming down, down the way here. So I think this is a big enough ticket item that should be deliberated at the budget deliberations.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. So you're making a motion to table this to, to the 2013 budget review? So that motion's in order. So we have discussion or debate on Counselor Gustafson's motion, which is specific to the twenty, to tabling this for consideration? Yeah, no, good point. So a motion, no, a motion to table the, the benefits of tabling, or whether one would be in support or not of tabling? I'll, I'll open that up for discussion or debate. Counselor Wong?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm going to speak against tabling this motion. And the reason I don't feel we should do that is this Crystal Center expansion, or the future of the Crystal Center, has been a topic on council's radar for quite some time. And delaying it until after budget, what's going to happen there is it's going to push the report well into the next year, and this, this council won't have an opportunity to do anything with the results of that report. That's what I'm afraid of, and it's already been two terms that I know of that we've been looking at that. And for those of us who may not be here at the table for the third term, it would be nice to know that you have an opportunity to have input on that decision.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Which, I suppose Counselor Rice, if you want to be more specific, it's actually a motion of referral to a specific time, so. Counselor O'Toole?
Yes, I was just wondering if we do have the money set aside for this, and where did the money come from?
The, the motion is, that Counselor Crokin made was specific to the future capital expenditure reserve, which is a city reserve. So it is, it is funded, or sorry, it has the potential to be funded. Any further discussion or debate on Counselor Gustafson's motion? Counselor Monroe?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Just back to Counselor Wong's comments, can someone refresh my memory how long they expected the report to take, or to be completed?
For administration, Community Growth Director?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We hope to. Mr. Mayor, we hope to have the, if approved, we hope to have the RFP back in October and the report from the study in early spring of 2013.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion or debate on Counselor Gustafson's motion to table or refer this to the 2013 budget discussion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor of Counselor Gustafson's motion? One long arm in favor? All those opposed? And motion is defeated. So we're back to Counselor Crokin's main motion. Discussion or debate on Counselor Crokin's motion. Counselor Wong, and then Counselor McLean, and then Counselor Monroe.
Okay, I am going to speak in favor of the motion because I believe a study needs to be done. I am, however, very concerned about the $200,000 price tag, and this being an RFP, it's fairly open-ended in terms of what the scope of that study could be. So I would, I would hope that we don't use the whole $200,000. We won't know until we see the proposals come back.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll be voting against this, and a number of reasons is, Crystal Center is not full on a lot of occasions now. They're talking about new reading in Edmonton. It's been full of capacity for years for hockey games and everything. We got a new sign going in, they put fresh paint, market it better, get the job done. I'd be voting against this.
Counselor Monroe?
Thanks, Mayor Given, but did Counselor Crokin have?
He's in the queue.
Okay, fair enough. I just wanted to say that I will be supporting this motion, and I think that this will answer, hopefully, identify a lot of the issues that Counselor McLean just identified. And with that, possibly some solutions on how, what we can do to improve the facility so that we're not in a situation where the parking lot isn't full, so to speak. And I think I would just like to add to that, that, you know, once this study is complete, I think that this council really needs to take a strong look on, at it and act on it instead of waiting for another 10 years and having to do the study again. Thank you.
Counselor Crokin, and then Counselor O'Toole?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Just to address Counselor Wong's concern, in the actual motion, it's of up to $200,000, so it wouldn't be a specific $200,000. So in the RFPs, we'll get a chance to have a look at that. We won't have to approve up to $200,000.
Okay, Counselor O'Toole, and then Counselor Radburn?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Mr. McLean, Counselor McLean? When the Conrad Boychuk come to the council and we met with him, there was a lot of possibilities that could be done with the Crystal Center. He's not saying that he's, at this point in time, what is going to work and what's not going to work. He needs to do some research. This is going to take some time, and what's, his recommendation is going to be, is what, what the city needs. So at the end of the day, we may not be doing any construction to the facility, or we may have an opportunity to change the structure of the facility to get more people in and make it more user-friendly. So, thank you very much.
Okay, Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I will be supporting this motion as well. I just, I really believe that, that we need to strategize and determine the best bang for the buck with respect to the expansion. And for me, that includes a market analysis. Things have changed in 10 years. We have two strong competitors. We need to find where our niche is. We need to find, is there a market for more big concerts? Or is there a market for smaller conferences? That's the type of information we need to know before we move forward. In terms of we must do something, I'm not so sure if we need, we must do something, but I think this will inform us and will give us the information where we, as a group, can decide where is the best investment with respect to that facility so that we can move forward with it. So for me, it's not determining what the, what the investment will be, but it's good information in terms of if we did this, we can expect this, these kinds of revenues. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any further discussion or debate? Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given, and Counselor O'Toole, you are correct. May, nothing may happen from this, but it'll still be $200,000. And if some kind of expansion does happen, it will not give us another ice service or fix a field. So that, just, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you very much, Counselor McLean. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Counselor Radburn?
One quick one. I think if the timeline that Janet shared with us of spring of 213th will be an interesting debate discussion within the community as we move towards an election that fall. So that's a way to engage the community.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote on Counselor Crokin's motion. All in favor? That motion carries with eight in favor and opposed? One opposed, Counselor McLean opposed. Counselor Crokin, do you have anything else you want to highlight in that set of minutes?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Ms. Kylie Haining, the aid community living director, reported to committee on some correspondence we received, the, regarding the municipal partnership to support the regional outdoor recreation facility at Nighthawk Recreation Area. It was a great big thank you to the city of Grand Prairie for supporting them, which 75 to possibly 80% of the citizens of Grand Prairie use that recreation area. So thank you to them, and then thank you to us for helping them. And that's everything, Mayor Given.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Crokin. There was nothing else from that Community Development Committee meeting? And just, the city manager sort of highlighted one that has, I believe has maybe been done, a tender for Coca-Cola Center upgrades? It's been handled? Okay. Legislative Services Manager?
The Coca-Cola, the matter for the Coca-Cola Center was, dealt with at the August seventh meeting of council.
Okay, thank you. Thanks very much. So we'll move on to nine point three, the 100th Anniversary Committee meeting from August eighth. Counselor Rice?
I would, I would move that council award RFP two-seven-one-oh-three-one-two to MKM as the highest evaluated proposal for the 100th Anniversary History Book for $109,068, excluding GST.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Discussion and debate on the motion? I see the Legislative Services Manager has a point?
Thank you, Mayor Given. The minutes need, motion needs to be made first to receive the minutes.
Don't hear the agenda, I assumed it was because it's an external, well, fine.
No, 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 thank you.
So then I will withdraw that motion and move that we receive the minutes of the August eighth meeting.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Rice. So a motion to receive the minutes?
That would have to be in addition to our agenda as well.
So a motion for the minutes from August eighth? The minutes are in council's package. Any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Counselor Rice?
Okay, I would move that council award RFP two-seven-one-oh-three-one-two to MKM as the highest evaluated proposal for the 100th Anniversary History Book for $109,068, excluding GST.
Thanks, Counselor Rice. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Counselor Wong?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I was just wondering if that number fell within the budgeted amount, and what was included in that 109? What did we get for $109,000?
Counselor Rice, or maybe the Marketing Communications Manager? Mr. Olenger?
Yes, Mayor Given, for that book that we're looking at, a coffee table-style book, we're also looking at the opportunity to do video augmentation to it in terms of Vimeo's and the opportunity to then preserve beyond the book. So it's a fairly extensive project that'll require research over the two years of the project, which will be launched in the August-long weekend in 2014.
Okay, so I'm assuming that what you said is it's collecting the information and producing the book? How many copies of the book would we be getting?
That will depend on how the budget works out, and we haven't come to a price point yet either. So the, we have put aside, that falls well within the money we've put aside. We've been putting about, basically had $120,000 put away for it. So we haven't determined a price point for the book because we certainly wanted to wait to see how the RFP came in. So that's one of the considerations and recommendations that the committee will need to come forward with is a price point for the book based on some of the other municipalities that have put books out recently.
Okay, and then do we intend to sell the book to recover some of our costs?
That would be the intent.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Questions or comments? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor? And opposed? One opposed? Thank you. Counselor Rice, nine point three point two?
I would move that council approve the proposed 100th Anniversary logo. The committee was very excited about this. We felt that the logo that we recently, or the, the design that we recently adopted as part of our branding was perfect to be modified with just 100th Anniversary 2014 included with it. So the committee was, was very excited that we were able to approve and recommend this design to council.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Any discussion or debate on the recommendation, the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor? That motion carries unanimously. And Counselor Rice, anything else to highlight from that set of minutes?
Yeah, it was an excellent meeting. We were really excited that the Grand Prairie Tourism Association has taken over the development and distribution of souvenirs, and they have recommended we go with five souvenir categories that we, you can get into a lot of trouble with leftover stock if you go too broad. And so I think that certainly their report gave everyone on the committee a great deal of confidence in, in their ideas and their abilities. Also, we will have T-shirts for sale, but we're going to develop volunteer T-shirts in a separate color, and those won't be available for sale. But that way, we don't have to do several different designs. It'll be just the color that differentiates them. And we were extremely pleased to welcome Cindy Simigan to the homecoming committee to be working with Counselor Gustafson and Janet Longmait on that. It was rather exciting. Most people know Cindy through her work at the Chamber, and Cindy, a couple, a few years ago, was the employee of the year in Grand Prairie through her work with the college. So an excellent addition to our committee.
Great, thanks very much, Counselor Rice. So we'll move on to nine point four, Protective Services Committee. Counselor Wong?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council receive the minutes of the Protective Services Committee meeting held August 14, 2012.
Thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Thank you, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you, that motion carries unanimously. Councillor Wong?
I move that council, on behalf of the Grand Prairie Regional Emergency Partnership, enter into an agreement with the Canadian Centre for Unmanned Vehicle Systems to complete the work for the unmanned vehicle project. And just in speaking with, to this quickly, this is a provincially funded program through grants and the city of Grand Prairie has, was awarded the grant to participate in this unmanned vehicle project. I think it's a really innovative and unique project for our city to get involved in. I think it speaks well to our brand because our, our city is, or our region, I should say, has a very high proportion of inventors and patents, especially patents per capita. And the, the unmanned vehicle project basically will assist emergency services with those remote control type devices in dangerous situations in land, air, and water. I think that that's, it's just a really cool project for us to get involved in and I, I think that it fits our region very well.
Okay, thanks very much councillor Wong. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Councillor Wong, anything else from that set of Protective Services minutes?
As I scroll through my agenda here, I know we had a couple pieces of correspondence, one from, or a couple from the provincial government, one on extending firefighters' work hours to, to be inclusive of up to 24-hour shifts. We had our fire department speak on that and they said that although it is going to be adopted provincially, that's not something that we're going to do in our fire department because we believe that there's some inherent health risks with, with that kind of system. And let's see, the other piece, oh, there it is. The other piece of correspondence was, oh, actually, was just the municipal policing assistance grant, which we, which is, we received as our, for information. It's just a regular piece of correspondence that we receive on an annual basis. It basically said that the provincial government was giving us about $800,000 to go into our pot of the $12 million worth of policing services that we provide our city residents. Also, we had some business on unsightly premises. We had a motion from our committee to direct administration to draft an unsightly premises bylaw and report back to a future meeting. I do invite other members of council to look for that in their agenda so we, we can have a debate on what should it be inclusive in a bylaw like that so that it can be enforced properly and, so that it addresses all the issues that you've been hearing out there from the public.
Okay, thanks very much councillor Wong. Then we move on to item 9.5, councillor Radburn, the General Government Services Committee Meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council receive the minutes of the General Government Services Committee Meeting held August 14, 2012 with the following changes. Two point, where am I here? 2.1, I would ask that we include Ms. S. White-Harlock and Mr. Wade Nellis, Grand Prairie Library representatives, were present because they both presented. And secondly, under 2.3, should read, moved by Mayor Given, refer to administration for revision, the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, FCM Resolution on Interstruction, report back at the next committee meeting. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Okay, thanks councillor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on the minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Thank you, that motion carries unanimously. Councillor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council establish that. One, properties subject to 2011 tax recovery notification as per the tax list be offered for sale by public auction. Two, that the auction be held on the first floor, North Conference Room at City Hall on Friday, November 30, 2012 at 9:00 a.m. And three, that the reserve bids for the 2012 tax sale be set as recommended. Speaking of the motion, this is our standard procedure. Administration has found that the fall sale within the first year of eligibility has proven effective. The reserve bids are confirmed as close to market value. There are 90 properties and 1.4 million in tax arrears in, in this process. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much councillor Radburn. Discussion and debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Councillor Radburn?
Thank you. I move council receive the audited financial statements and schedules for the six-month period ended June 30, 2012. The report in the package covered the areas where we're a little up, a little down. The end result, I think, was an estimate at this point in time, things change, of $665,000 in term, at the end of the year is a surplus. But I caution everyone that things change in a half a year. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much councillor Radburn. Discussion and debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Councillor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council approve the award of RFP 26-215-12 to Telus as the solution provider for the video conferencing system project in the amount of $367,648.76 excluding GST for hardware, software, configuration, training, installation, and professional services, and three years of maintenance and support. So in speaking of the motion, the key business drivers for this project were fire department training, improved hiring processes, reduction in travel time and cost related to meetings between staff who work at various city locations, increased productivity across dispersed project teams, and reduction in the city's carbon footprint. We did have three initial bids for this in the technical phase. However, one vendor was deemed non-compliant in the costing phase as they did not submit a complete price proposal, therefore there were two bids. And Telus was, in terms of, was rated the higher of the two. And they also had the, the, their cost was the best bid as well. Thank you.
Okay, thanks councillor Radburn. Discussion or debate on the motion? Councillor Munro?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I was at a committee meeting when this was discussed and I've since had plenty of time to think about, about this endeavor that we're going to be going down on. To me, it's $367,000 to be spent on video conferencing seems a little bit extreme. Yes, it is a very neat system. It's very technologically advanced. I think it would help out in a lot of areas. However, I think that the cost needs to be factored in, in this, and I think that we're just overspending in this regard. I'm also concerned that after the three years of service is over, how much are we going to have to reinvest into the hardware to maintain it? Or how much is the servicing cost going to be on a go-forward basis? You know, is it going to be $35,000 a year, $50,000 a year? I don't believe that we're going to get any kind of labor savings as a result of having this. Once again, I do think it is, it's, it's unique. However, I think that the cost at this time just doesn't warrant us investing in this. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much councillor Munro. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Councillor O'Toole and then councillor Radburn?
Yes, thank you much, Mayor Given. I have a tendency to agree with councillor Munro. One of the arguments that was brought up was the travel time in the air flights going to different meetings and out of town. And I'm still, don't have a firm grip that we're spending $300,000 in airfare, hotels, and time off. So, all things considered, I'm going to probably vote against this.
Okay, thanks very much councillor O'Toole. Councillor Radburn?
Just a quick comment. I think that if we espouse to be a, a learning organization, I think this will be just a superb tool to not only continue that vision of ourselves and also save some money. So, and this is already budgeted for, it was part of the capital budget that we passed. So I respect the different perspectives, but I would be supporting the motion.
Councillor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Can someone just refresh me on where this money's coming from?
Councillor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. As I just said, the money has been included.
Sorry, your microphone went.
This money has been included in the Information Technology Services Corporate IT Initiative Capital Budget.
Okay, councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. As councillor Munro was saying about the price tag, but I also was looking at this on a hiring perspective and say, an engineer for transportation or in Nova Scotia or Ontario, why do I move to Grand Prairie? And you get to see the individual, might be moving here for 20 years, 30 years' service, and they can do a video conference for hiring and that's what sold me, I'll be voting for it.
Thanks very much councillor McLean. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Councillor Wong?
I've been struggling with this one as well because $367,000 is a lot of money for a video conferencing system. I think that the technology out there is going to change so drastically in three years that it'll be available for free everywhere you, everywhere you turn around. And we would have invested into cutting-edge technology that'll, that will be essentially obsolete in three years and everyone, everyone will be, have access to it. I, I believe if we need to do some of the video conferencing stuff, it's already available on the desktop. It's, you know, I know, yeah, there's lots and lots of other systems out there. I don't know that we need to go to this extreme level.
Okay, thanks councillor Wong. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? If, if I could, council, one point, because I, at the committee, brought up one very similar to councillor Wong, saying, you know, this, I can video conference from my phone and from many other devices, why can't we use that? And administration reminded me at the committee meeting that the city's security systems and our requirement to protect the data within all of our computer networks means that we have to ensure that they're relatively closed down. And so enabling home user available systems like Skype would require them to essentially lower some of the security in certain areas and that that wasn't a risk for a number of reasons that we couldn't take. One major one being the fact that we have certain requirements in order to be able to accept Visa and other credit cards. We have to ensure that the integrity of our network is to a certain standard. So at the committee level, that was the information that brought me on side with the understanding of why we couldn't use a sort of off-the-shelf commercially or home user available system. And I certainly appreciate the city has additional requirements, so that made up my mind for me. Any other further discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor? I have four in favor and opposed? And five opposed, the motion is defeated. So we will move on. Councillor Radburn?
I won't say anything. I move council authorize the city of Grand Prairie to participate in an application for the municipal benchmarking Alberta project submitted by the town of Banff under the regional collaboration component of the regional collaboration program. And further, that the city, if participant, agrees to abide by the terms of the conditional grant agreement governing the purpose and use of the grant funds. So just to talk a little bit about this project, the purpose of the project is to foster and support a culture of service excellence in municipal government by creating new ways to measure, share, and compare performance data and operational practices and act as a source of credible information to assist council, senior management, staff, and citizens to understand how their municipality is performing over time and in relation to others. Some of the benefits include promoting the understanding of best practice, supporting municipalities to identify areas where there may be opportunities to improve their efficiency or effectiveness, provide objective evidence to address questions from council staff in the community on service efficiency and effectiveness, provide objective evidence on the differences in service levels between municipalities, and support continuous improvement initiatives, including a better understanding of the drivers that impact performance results. So what this, what this motion really contemplates is that if the, if this passes, we will then be a part of the application, if the, if, to government for the, for grant funding. If application is successful, the cost will be between $5,000 and $15,000. That had been in discussion with administration and that money would come from the corporate professional development slash training fund. That would be an appropriate source of funding since the benchmarking would lead to improvement in how the city delivers services. If the application is not successful, then we do not have the commitment to participate and so really, we won't expend any monies. So I think committee, those that choose to spoke at committee, supported the motion because we really see it's a, we can be, become part at the ground level of a project whose whole purpose will be to improve our performance as an organization. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much councillor Radburn. Discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor? That motion carries unanimously? Thanks very much councillor Radburn. Anything else to cover from that GGS meeting?
I do. Again, thank you for the, we had eight, eight of us at the meeting. We had the Grand Prairie Library audit financial statements. We had Mr. De Belt from Northwest Corridor Development Corporation and the Peace Region Economic Development Alliance give us, provide us with updates and I really felt that he provided some frank and sincere assessment of directions of those organizations. We did, I guess, send FCM Infrastructure Resolution back to admit for further work before it comes back. And we provided input to Mr. Glavine for the former York Hotel Germaine Park RFI, giving him, I guess, the flexibility to use our input and then get the RFI out. Thank you.
Thanks very much councillor Radburn. I believe that wraps up our committee business for tonight. We had no items of correspondence and we didn't have anybody that wanted to come forward for delegation tonight. We had no notices of motions. That bring us to council member reports. Councillor Rice, I believe you had an AUMA report.
Did I? Attended an Alberta Recycling Management Authority meeting. Under the leadership of Alberta Recycling Management, the tire recycling programs is one of the province's key environmental stewardship programs. Since 1992, over 70 million tires have been recycled and this is primarily to ensure that material, this material is not being landfilled and also to prevent stockpiling of old tires. The tires are recycled into a number of products, including tire-derived aggregate. And its primary application is as a medium for leachage collection and drainage systems in landfills. Since 1996, municipal landfills across Alberta have used approximately 300,000 tons of tire-derived aggregate. That's the equivalent of 30 million tires in landfills. The benefits of tire-derived aggregate are it dramatically reduces unit costs compared to conventional aggregate. It's a recycled product. It transforms waste into resource and it provides demonstrated protective qualities for liners when compared to conventional aggregate. And we have Aqua Terra running our landfill and I, I would like to see us at some point invite them to a public works meeting to, to talk about using tire-derived aggregate as a, a direction from council. I believe there's huge cost savings and advantages. We also had a presentation from the Canadian Network of Asset Managers. And the city of Edmonton will be hosting a network of asset managers in Edmonton, May 5th to the 8th, 2013. And this will be the seventh annual conference. And Grand Prairie is very fortunate, we have had a staff member sitting on that, I believe right now, it's Matthew Hinton. But it's something, as they get the pamphlets out, as it gets a little closer, I encourage council to take a look at it. There is, it's, it's a very, 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 very useful organization. I attended my first meeting as the utilities consumer advocate, so I'm finding it's a really steep learning curve, so I'll have to report.
Thanks very much councillor Rice. Councillor Rice, I don't believe there are any other... Councilor Rice, I don't believe there are any other committee reports, so if, would you start roundtable for us?
Oh, sure. I attended the opening of the skateboard park over adjacent to the Eastlink Centre, and absolutely amazed when I pulled up at the number of people that were there. And not only the number of people that were there, the number of happy people that were there. Everyone had huge, big smiles on their face. There was also several businesses represented there who had gone to, you know, considerable trouble and expense to bring in professionals and to, the, the air of celebration was absolutely amazing, and, and I commend the staff. I attended at Walmart for the Red Cross scavenger hunt with my awesome partners, Counselor O'Toole and Counselor McLean, was a rather interesting exercise where you were told, here's a cart, there has been an emergency, a disaster, there is no power, there is no water, there is no, you have seventy-two hour, you have, it will be this way for at least seventy-two hours. What do you need to have to cope in that type of an emergency? Counselor McLean seemed to think food was the whole answer. We did, I think, very, very well. As a team, we functioned very, very quickly. Unfortunately, the Highway Patrol won, to the degree that even the Red Cross was asking him, could you teach this course? So we didn't have, he and his son, we didn't have much of a chance against him. But certainly a very thought-provoking as they encourage everyone, and you can get the list from the Red Cross, what you should keep in a container and update, so you and your family can cope in case of that type of disaster or emergency. That's it for me.
Thanks very much, Councilor Rice. Councilor Monroe?
Thanks very much, Mayor Given. I attended the joint meeting with the county in regards to our annexation, and I'm looking forward to that progressing along this fall. I was also at the skateboard park and would definitely echo all the comments that Councilor Rice had said. And on top of that, I was amazed that Helen can still ride a skateboard. And then last week, I had the pleasure of participating in the Development Appeal Board. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Monroe. Councilor Crokin?
Thank you, Mayor Given. On the August eleventh, I brought greetings on behalf of, of the mayor and council to the Slow Pitch fundraiser for batting for a cure for cancer. And I want to make a special thanks to the president and CEO, Al Hewen. He came all the way from Calgary. He's the president and CEO for Topco Oil Site Products Limited. They had three teams from their own company. I mean, he's, he's very, very dedicated to it, so he was very happy to be up here, and hopefully, maybe next year, we'll put a team in, because I threw out the pitch, and it's not that hard, I could be your pitcher. Well, I kind of got a couple of them in there.
Some of the balls hit right at you.
Yeah, well, that's what I could do. And there was another person, Trish Bronze from Edmonton. She is the president for Canadian Breast Cancer Foundation. It was a nice, they were very, very pleased with our facilities out there, and thanked us, thanked me to bring it back to the city council. And on the fifteenth, I attended the city hall in-camera session, and I was busy, but that was about it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Councilor Crokin. Councilor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I was, I was away for a portion of this last term here, and aside from my regularly scheduled meetings, I was able to go to the open house at Sunrise House, had a tour of the rather large duplex that, that our, our children are able to stay at when they have nowhere else to go. I congratulate those people that work there, they have a hard job to deal with some of those kids sometimes, and that's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Gustafson. Councilor Redburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. August eighth, I also attended the Sunrise House Youth Shelter Summer Barbecue, and was given the tour. Just to note, council might be interested in knowing that they did receive some grant money, so they, for, I think, six months. They have a staffer who works solely with the families to, so that, to increase their capacity so they can work with their children. So I thought that was, it's not just all about the youth, it's about the family support mechanisms around them. So I thought that was progressive. Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Association, the ninth, thirteenth, annexation city committee team meeting, fifteenth, annexation meeting with the county council team, Skateboard Park Plaza ribbon-cutting and opening, and Airport Commission meeting on the sixteenth. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Redburn. Councilor O'Toole?
Thank you much, Mayor Given. On August eighth, I attended the Sunrise House, open house as well. It was a, it supplies a lot of support to the youth on a short-term basis. On the seventeenth, I attended the Red Cross scavenger hunt with my fellow teammates. And it's amazing when, when everything comes down to the final straws, what is a priority to people? And what toilet paper might be important to some counselor, blanket might be important to somebody else, and food might be someone else. So one of the things that was brought up by the, the Red Cross group was we sometimes forget to put money away. And the credit cards, the ATM machines, when a power's out, power's out. These items don't work. And strongly suggested that we put cash away in one of these bins or container, and also radio that's operated with battery. And also, on the eighteenth, I attended the Prater Willie Syndrome fundraising walk. Mayor Given gave the proclamation reading here yesterday. I didn't attend the walk itself, I had some fires to put out that day, but it was good to see that, that there was a proclamation available for nationwide facility, or nationwide cause.
Thanks very much, Councilor O'Toole. Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. August fifteenth, we had a council committee as a whole meeting. As well as August fifteen, I attended the grand opening of this new skateboard park at Eastlink Centre with my two children, Kendra and Karen, my wife Tina. And I was really amazed just how many children, and actually more than just children, I think in early twenties that were on there, skateboard, rotor blades, bikes. But the one thing that got my attention was how many of them, the bikers were wearing helmets, but all the rest weren't. So if a fall on concrete happens with your head, something else is going to win. So I don't know, I think the helmet issue someday might pop up, and I wish them all, no helmet issues, but. So as well, on August seventeen, I was at the Walmart with Counselor O'Toole and Counselor Rice, and it was actually a lot of fun. We had thirty minutes, we were the first one to get in, we thought we were doing amazingly well, until the Boy Scout group got us. And, but anyways, it was amazing. I was, I was actually sweating a bit there. Walmart's a pretty big store now, and they're expansion.
I was thinking, have some food.
It was kudos to Walmart for doing that and bringing another grocery store in town. But also what's good is when they think of Red Cross, you think of somewhere in Africa, somewhere far away, but actually, at home, over seven thousand residents in Alberta, last year we were affected and helped by Red Cross. Hayward Court building just burnt down. In Grand Prairie, there was individuals that were helped for a few nights' stay, and about ten thousand people in B.C., so that's just the two near problems. So Red Cross actually helps out amazingly well. And as well, on August seventeenth, I attended the Kev's Kids fundraiser barbecue at the Co-op, and I was talking to Kev, and I'm not sure how much they raised so far, but they're thinking around one and a quarter million dollars since it started, so hats off to Kev's Kids.
Thanks, Councilor McLean. Councilor Wong?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I attended the Youth Emergency Shelter barbecue and open house. I'd have to say that it was, it was nice to see the house. I got, I took a tour of the entire facility. I haven't been on that tour, or I haven't toured the facility for at least six years. I thought it was in incredible shape since the renovations, and I just wanted to give a shout out to all the board members, staff, and volunteers for the excellent job that they do managing our troubled youth. On Friday, August tenth, I had a Wapiti Corridor Planning Society website subcommittee meeting. On August fifteenth, I was at the skateboard park opening at the Eastlink Centre. On Friday, the seventeenth, I was at a tender opening at city hall here. Also attended a couple of annexation meetings, both with just the city and then with the city and county respective parties. And finally, this morning, we had, or this afternoon, we had a policy review committee meeting, and we went through a lot of different policies in the enforcement services and community services area, which I guess are now the community safety and community living areas. We referred two, two of the policies to different committee meetings. First was the video surveillance in public areas policy to Protective Services Committee, and that one, we asked them to consolidate the policy wherever, or consolidate wherever possible, the idea of which buildings have video surveillance and who has access to them. And basically, every building right now has its own policy regarding those items, and it would be good to have them all under one policy so that everyone knows what's, what's expected of them. The other one was the alcohol management policy, which was referred to Community Services Committee, and that's for city-owned and operated facilities, and has to do with special events and room rentals where alcohol is permitted. At this point, we still, we have individual policies for different buildings, and some of the buildings that are owned and operated by the city don't actually have a written policy. So again, we've asked to consolidate the policy wherever possible. And that's everything.
Thanks very much, Councilor Wong. So council's been, been busy, so that I'll make my report fairly brief. I also, of course, attended the range of annexation meetings that had been mentioned. I attended the opening of the skateboard park at Eastlink Centre, and just to note, I was there a few weeks ago, and the kids certainly weren't waiting for the official ribbon cutting. They've been riding on it for the last number of weeks. I think as soon as the concrete was solid, they started riding. And I also wanted to recognize a number of young volunteers. I understand that there are a number of riders that were so excited to see the facility open that they were there with shovels, actually helping move landscaping materials to make sure that it was ready for the grand opening. So it's good to see that the users of the facility are so excited and energetic that they want to be able to be in there and, and help out. I also attended the Airport Commission meeting, and on Friday, the seventeenth, I had the opportunity to bring greetings on behalf of the City of Grand Prairie to the wrap-up of what, and I have to apologize for council, I don't remember the, the most recent name, but the program that I know as the Aboriginal Workplace Initiative Program, where Aboriginal students from communities within our region have an opportunity to come and explore working opportunities for six weeks with different employers. The City of Grand Prairie has participated in this program since its inception. We had two students who had an opportunity to explain, explore a range of different work environments within the city organization, and I want to thank the city staff members who made that possible. For the students, obviously, it's a lot of growth and development, understanding the workplace, but for a lot of them, it's also their first opportunity to live away from home, and so there's also a lot of personal development that goes on, and you could see a lot of pride in the students. And I understand that our city students, the word was getting out about how great the City of Grand Prairie was, and students that worked at other places in their placement this year had heard that they should see if they can get into the city next year. So I think that's a great reputation. And thanks so much again to all the staff who made that possible. On the nineteenth, of course, I was down at Muskegon Park with Counselor O'Toole to read the proclamation for Prater Willie Syndrome. This is a rare genetic disorder that affects about one in fifteen thousand births, and essentially, people afflicted with this don't have an off button for, for their appetites amongst a number of other things, and so obviously very challenging for the individual but also for their families. And so it was good to see that the family in Grand Prairie that is facing this had support from their community, and want to thank Scotiabank for being supporters nationally of the One Small Step campaign. And I believe that that's all that I had to report. So if there's nothing else, then we'll call our council meeting adjourned. Thank you.